Huh? Stop it. They don't even work.
I can't, I don't know. We're missing the city manager. That won't stop us from starting.
Yeah, these aren't even that good anymore.
He heard me.
Yeah, I need, just need readers though. Does anybody have readers? Hey, many of you guys have a pair of readers?
Readers?
Okay, I need it.
You want to stagger them?
Huh?
I can hold a couple of them, you know, stagger them.
What are they? What degree?
Call the meeting of the Galt City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Present.
Councilmember Hewer? Councilmember Campion?
Present.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Mayor Cruz?
Present. Could you all rise, please, for a silent prayer? Chief Coman, would you lead us to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't you read the video state up, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is also webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Tonight's meeting will air this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. This meeting is also closed captions. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
All right. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions?
I'd like to pull E6, please.
Anyone else? All right. Presentations. Senior program, Parks and Recreation.
Mayor and city council. I will be handing the microphone over to Recreation Supervisor Monica Lopez to provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. So we're going to talk about the City of Galt Parks and Recreation Department senior programs and activities. The first thing we're going to talk about is the senior club. This is for any senior who would like to be a member. They meet on most Wednesdays at 1:00. They have official meetings on the first and fourth Mondays of each month. The third Monday is a potluck lunch. And if there is a fifth Monday, it is a sundae with coffee and donuts. And after those items, they have bingo starting at 1:30. The club also does bingo on Thursdays beginning at 12:45. Our Meals on Wheels program, which we do with the ACC, the Asian Community Center. We serve meals at this Chabola Community Center as well as home delivery meals. The suggested donation for the meals is $2 per meal, but that is just suggested. We have Gail Plummer as our instructor for our Fitnesses Forever and Fitness in a Chair on Mondays and Fridays. These classes are specifically designed for those 50 years and older with emphasis on stretching, flexing, and toning the body. Fitnesses Forever is 9:30 to 10:30 for $2 per person. And the Fitness in a Chair is at 10:45 to 11:15 for $1 per person. We have senior cards Tuesdays and Thursdays in the Viederman Moran classrooms at Parks and Recreation. It starts at noon and it goes to about 3:00 or whenever they're done playing for the day. We have line dancing in the Chabola Community Center Tuesdays and Thursdays, Tuesdays from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. And Thursdays, 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at no cost. We have Tai Chi with instructor Brendan Norris on Tuesdays at 9:30 in the Viederman Moran classroom. This is $5 per person for class. We offer egg art on Saturdays, once a month, once every month. Begins at 9:00 in the Fairsite classroom. And it goes to about 4:00 or 5:00 every Saturday that they have class. It's $5 to participate in the class and then you pay additionally depending on what the art project is. We have our senior games and our health fair. And your sasas has been ran as one event. The last two years we've ran them separately. Senior games, we typically hold on the first Thursday or Friday of June. Games are held at the Chabola Community Center and then lunches served at Sephora Aquatic Center with entertainment. The health fair is sponsored by the Commission on Aging. For the past two years, it has been held on a Friday in May. And this offers guidance from professionals in the senior healthcare industry. They, seniors get free resources and information on things like healthcare support groups, health and wellness. We also have some vendors who sell items as well as food that's available for them to purchase. At that event, all donations collected from the vendors, all that money goes to the Meals on Wheels program. Finally, we have our casino bus trips. We plan for four to six bus trips each year for mainly the seniors. The past couple of years, we've only been going to Red Hot Casino because that's the one that they prefer to go to. It's the most popular because it leaves at 7:30 in the morning and they're back before 3:00 in the afternoon. The cost is $18 per person and that includes coffee and donuts if they meet at the Chabola Community Center, some free play at the casino, and the bus ride. We also offer extra pickup behind railies at the senior living homes in that area. They can be picked up on the corner behind railies if they like. For this, you must pay for your seat at least to expire to the scheduled date and you can register at the Parks and Rec office. That is the presentation. If you have any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about comments?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Thank you. And we have one speaker. Maria Frizzani?
Hi, my name is Johnny Valton. I attend Liberty Road High School. And I'm here to just tell her she has an issue at the Galt Market. And she'd like to set up a meeting with the city council. She wants to set up an appointment to keep privately separate issues. She's been having this problem for about seven years and that's been happening. And so she would like to set up a private meeting to show you for proof inside of the issue to resolve that and make some changes. And it's been, it's a long lasting problem that has just been really struggling. Helps somewhat alleviate the problem and it makes it doesn't happen again. It's just not working enough. Okay, and she wants to have a meeting with the, with the senior manager because this is a problem that isn't going to get just resolved in five minutes. And she needs someone with more authority to kind of have teeth with this problem. So it doesn't happen again and it can just get resolved.
Has she talked with you or Monica?
Yeah, she has spoken to me. She has spoken to the Assistant City Manager Barry Weiss. Her attorney has spoken to our city attorney over these last several years. So yes, we have spoken to her. And at that last conversation between our city attorney and her attorney, seemed like the matter was resolved.
Because she has the right to have another meeting with the council. There is nothing I can do to prevent.
Well, without talking about the issue, Jason?
Oh, yeah.
I'm happy to meet. And if the mayor wants to join us, that would be, that would be fine.
That would be fine, yeah.
Um, for the benefit of the rest of the council, if you could give us a summary of whatever the issue is.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have no idea what we're talking about. What's the issue we're dealing with here?
Well, that's.
I'd ask you to have her state what the issue is. I'm unclear what it is right now.
What's, can you ask what the specific issue is? Well, let's do this then. Just to expedite things, let's get her, her information, contact information. And Jason, will it have your secretary contact her to set up an appointment?
Well, I suggest, she's going to have to have someone represent her. So I would suggest she contact Jason's office, the city manager. He'll give you the information. And then you can set up a meeting to meet with Jason.
Okay.
The city manager.
And then when it's over?
Then when it's over. I would, when I, Jason, when I spoke to him, a summary, just after the fact.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's all we have for public speakers. Okay. Content calendar. And Mr. Campion, you pulled E6.
Yes. On, and I had a couple of questions. On both of these, we've got deferred public improvement agreements. One is for the gas station at Cimahorn. The other one's on industrial park for L&amp;L Wood Products. I understand under the Cimahorn that the, that the performance, payment and performance bonds that have to be done are provided prior to execution of the agreement. However, under L&amp;L Woods, there's no requirement for bonds to be posted prior to the execution of the agreement or any subsequent time. And my concern is, is that, and I've seen this happen in the past. You know, you may have a difference of opinion, you may have a different landowner. Is, has staff looked at? I did talk to the city attorney earlier today. I know that in the past, the city has used CDs or letters of credit to satisfy that requirement. I also understand that there is some, you know, not a clear understanding of what improvements you want on live oak there. But I think having some firm method of constructing those improvements would be better than not requiring a bond or some, some type of security.
Mr. Campion, council members. Philosophically, I would agree typically you don't want to defer improvements without some form of security.
Correct.
In this case, we were working in a negotiated environment to try to figure out a way to make it business friendly for a business that was going to bring a large amount of employment and potential revenues to the city. They were very concerned with not only the cost of the improvements that were going to be ultimately needed, but the timing of those improvements. So we were speaking with them about the option to potentially defer. What makes this area perhaps unique from, from many others is that they're sitting on a dead end road that really only serves the city's smud power plant and the city's industrial water treatment site.
Right.
And then is adjacent to agricultural property. So it could very well be a long time before the improvements are required there, perhaps even as long as a decade or more. And the concern would be that if they were to post security up front, which is the normal procedure to give the city some type of assurance, that they would either have to pay a bond premium or hold an escrow through a letter of credit, significant amount of money to the tune of $457,000 and be paying bond premiums on that or otherwise tying up their capital for up to a decade. And they were very concerned about the, sort of the impact and hardship that that would place on the cash flow of the business.
I guess my concern is that we, you know, other than we have an agreement and if the property owner, and I'm not saying they wouldn't, but you could be dealing with a subsequent property owner who may not be as willing to move forward with those improvements. I guess my concern is that the city doesn't get stuck with those improvements that are legitimately the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, a couple of additional considerations that go with this are that they have, they're only developing about half of their property. So the agreement would run with the land, future property owner would inherit any responsibilities that are deferred. That the thought would be that they would likely before annexation and further industrial development occurs to the north, they would probably look to develop their property to the west or perhaps divide it, sell it. And that that would be a trigger and leverage point for getting and exercising both security and the deferred agreement.
Well, what's the remainder developmental portion of the site? I'm just curious.
I think it's about 10 acres. Build a, correct my math.
Originally, the L&amp;L sits on three. It's on three parcels and then a lot line adjustment to essentially divide it into, if you will, two thirds, one third. The precise acreage doesn't, it's, to my recollection, is about 10 acres. It's the land from, if you've gone out to the, if you go out to the site, there's a swath of undeveloped land between the water treatment plant and the developed portion.
Right.
And my understanding that is actually, that vacant piece is owned by L&amp;L in addition.
Would it be possible to record this agreement against both properties? I guess would be my next question then. To ensure that if development does occur on the rear property, at least you've got a trigger at the point of sale. Or at least an option.
I would certainly be supportive of approaching the developer to delay this action tonight. And under the recitals, that we include all three parcels as they're listed today.
Okay. Well, the recitals actually do include all three of the original parcels.
So then this, this agreement when recorded would show up against all three?
Yes.
Okay. Then that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. unanimous. And the remaining content calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
So will.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote, please. I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Payne?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Treasurer's office, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members. Before you, you have the treasurer's report from the March 2014. As a regression memory, this is a snapshot as of March 31st. But during the previous three months, where you've dealt with agencies, all of them, for all of them. And I know that, I know that we have some, the leaders and members of obligations that we also have traded within the next few months. So instead, we're going to invest that money, I put that money in ways to make that liquid. And this goes along with the, the model that we've always had, that it was in the city first, and then the money. And then liquidity, if we really had enough to put it in the money, and then go for the yield. So I had to move some off of the yield and put it on to the liquidity to make sure we had enough to pay our upcoming, uh, large obligations. Now, as of the end of March 2013, the city has earned $230,463,340 in interest. Better than last year. Same with that, I'll ask for your approval if, for March 2015, what I've been able to discuss.
Any questions from council?
No.
No. Motion by Councilmember Hewer, second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
unanimous. Will be gone to City of Galt Investment Policy fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is per Government Code. The investment policy has to be brought forward in a publicly to be discussed on a calendar basis. And it is investment policy that I'm proposing for fiscal year 2015, 2016. There's just a few things I'd like to mention. First, the investment policy provides, I'll say, okay, the city council has the ultimate responsibility to make investment decisions for the city. This investment policy provides, delegates that authority to the city treasurer to have on your behalf. So that's one thing they provide. The other thing is, when that delegation of authority is granted, it also is stated in inner investment policy what the objectives are. As I just mentioned, the objectives are safety first, security second, and yield third. Next, it also specifies exactly what investments that the treasurer can now invest in. And for how long. Those are investments, or securities believed from the US government that the treasury will, you know, government agencies, standing aid from the act of the home bank and all that, CDs, and all sort of the world's investments. The difference, the only difference between the investment policy from last year to this one that I'm proposing tonight is on the very last page. If you have any ideas, we have this of the improved brokers. Last year I had three of them. This year I've stepped one out and we're using down a lot of them. I picked out Bruce Patterson, who was a firm that he was with, Cantor Fitzgerald. He's no longer with that firm and there's no reason to keep him with us. So, and two brokers that I deal with is more than enough with the side form investment portfolio. So with that, I will be wanting to have to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll ask that the investor, the investment policy for fiscal year 2015.
Any questions from council? Do I have a motion? Sorry?
No, I said it looks good.
Moved by Councilmember Hewer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. unanimous votes.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to strategic plans. Update, one of those current things we've got going on with that would be enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities. I think I'm going to turn part of that over to council, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Payne. With her child.
The Mary No-Large Library, if you've been there recently, is pretty crowded. In fact, it's just one big room. And in that room, they have various programs. Some of them are things like Lego buildings with the children, which gets noisy. At the same time, we have computers in there where people are trying to work on computers as well as this old fashioned, big books down to read. So we are looking at ways that perhaps we could have a community room, a room mostly for programs. We've met with county supervisor Bonnie Polley, who's very supportive and willing to put his money where his mouth is and help support it. And currently, we are going to have the architects from the county come and look at what we have and make some suggestions. We are even considering a, just considering a possible manufactured, pre-manufactured type of position. But we want to organize, we think the Mary No-Large Library is in itself a nice looking building and we wouldn't let that be affected by stress. So hopefully, we have meetings coming up July 3rd, I believe.
Sure.
I mean, June 3rd. Do you know if the architect will be at that meeting?
I don't know.
Okay. So next time we should have some relevant.
Thank you. Next is going to be enhanced economic development. Mr. Bearman?
This item is to report on the results of Delta College locating south of Galt and north of Liberty Road. I think we talked about the last meeting. Letter the city sent to Delta College encouraging the development of the site of the Liberty Road property. There's also a local grassroots campaign effort being organized. They've been meeting, I think, on a, on a biweekly basis. And I think that, that group is, is growing and it's good to see the local community get involved. I know there's other groups that are submitting letters of support in the local town, school districts in particular. We had our Economic Development Task Force meeting this last week and we discussed the city's letter and encouraged that, that, the chamber to send their own letters. So I think the word is starting to, to get out. And Delta College right now is still in their, their evaluation phase, evaluating the different sites. They're still working on the feasibility analysis of, of our site. So the projected date for their decision is still later this summer, August, maybe September, who we're talking about. So we'll continue to be engaged in, in that process. And any questions from council on that?
We had our last, most recent meeting was last night and assignments were made as far as who was doing what. So we will take it from there. Next up, attract, develop, and retain quality employees. I'm sorry, I went one too far. Improve financial stability. Chief of Police and City Attorney, who might be on us?
Go ahead.
Evening, Mayor and council members. The city has been working on negotiating an agreement with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for the long-term use of the city's range. And I'm happy to report that we did conclude negotiations with the department over the last few days. And just about an hour before this meeting, we received the final agreement from the department for execution.
So we have signed agreement?
Well, we have to give it the once over tomorrow morning, but we hope by mid-morning that we're able to sign it. that we're able to sign it.
Awesome. All right, now we'll go to develop, retain, and quality employees. And I do not see Paul here.
Paul is not here, but I'll do this very quickly.
Okay.
Um, this, this new system, we're just about done with. We're going to be rolling it out probably the next couple of weeks to our supervisors. Going to be some training involved and getting them familiar with the new system, but we're hoping it's going to be well-received.
All right. Moving on to the next one, would be enhance cultural and youth activities. Mr. Inclis?
The last item on this slide is a, a future project, meaning that it won't be completed within our six-month horizon set in January, uh, but we are on track to have, uh, a series of improvements completed at Harvey Park. You've probably driven by and noticed, uh, the new fence around the new community garden that, uh, has been spearheaded by, uh, Councilmember Payne, and with support from Home Depot and other volunteers, and it's looking good. It's a great start, and, uh, it also included new backstops and dugouts, uh, at the ballfield, uh, there at Harvard Park, and we're, um, in the process of awarding a contract for procurement of playground equipment for the new tot lot, and, uh, we will soon be out on the street with, uh, Westford Bids on the new bathroom, uh, renovation project, and with the hopes that that will be done in time for our September, uh, Galt Heritage, uh, August.
August ninth.
For September 1st. We're working, uh, try to keep the pedal, the pedal on that.
All right, thank you, sir. And with that, our strategic plan has been updated. Uh, our next meeting for...
July?
July 3rd, or no, July?
Let's see. 14?
Okay, July 14th?
Yes, it is, July 14th.
Next up, City Attorney's Office, settlement authority for liability and workers' compensation claims. Mr. Rudolph?
Oh, good evening again. So just by, by way of background on this particular item, uh, the City of Galt is a member of an insurance pool known as Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund, and whenever we get, the city gets a liability claim or workers' comp claim, we refer that claim to the insurance pool, and they undertake an investigation, and then they make a recommendation back to the city, either to reject the, uh, claim, to make a payment on it, or, or another method for appropriately handing, handling the matter. Normally, most of those claims are modest in, uh, in dollar amount. Um, sometimes it's something like, uh, you know, repairing a windshield, or we have a sewer overflow in somebody's house that we have to take care of for a couple thousand dollars. And right now, in the, uh, in the municipal code, there is settlement authority granted to the city manager, up to $20,000 for, uh, liability claims. And that amount, when it was adopted, matched the contracting authority of the manager, which has, uh, since that time been increased to $30,000. Uh, there is, um, no delegation of authority for workers' comp claims in the municipal code. So the, the action items, uh, before you this evening, uh, compositively are a recommendation to grant settlement authority to the city manager for both, uh, liability and workers' comp claims in the amount of $30,000. And the manner for accomplishing that is first by an ordinance to remove the settlement authority of $20,000 from the municipal code, and then to adopt a resolution which grants the $30,000 for both, uh, liability and workers' comp, uh, claims to the city manager. Um, what this, uh, resolution provides additionally is that if the amount of any, uh, settlement is over $30,000, that the city council approval would be required, so it would come back to the city council for your consideration and decision. And then any settlements, um, that are approved by the, uh, city manager would be reported to the city council through appropriate means by the risk manager. We really don't have a high volume of, uh, claims that come through. That's a, you know, a good, a good thing, so that's why it's left a little bit abstract, because probably a quarterly report, um, might be pretty short, but, uh, depending upon the significance of the, the claim and, uh, the number, uh, the risk manager, who is, uh, Paul Esloss, would, uh, provide that information to the city council pursuant to the direction in this resolution. So that is the item, uh, presented tonight. The actual, uh, recommendation is to introduce an ordinance amending section 3.08050 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding processing of claims, wait for reading, and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption, and second, to adopt a resolution providing the city manager with authority to settle and compromise liability and workers' compensation claims against the city in an amount not to exceed $30,000. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Council, questions?
I have, uh, even other questions. Um, I would ask the city manager, is this something that you might be willing to report in your monthly reports that we get, if you did set our claims?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, just, I think, you know, I'd like to kind of keep up with it, and if we could just get that included in your report, I think, that would be good.
My question was similar, you know, when, you know, it says all the reports would be reported, but it doesn't say when, and it doesn't say by which method, so, um, I, I don't know whether it's sensitive material, if it should be confidential, if it's in a weekly, I would think so.
Right.
In many cases, this would be confidential information, so I don't know that the weekly would be the approving method, but I, I would like to know, you know, it's going to be in writing, um, you know, and it's on a timely basis, I mean, you know, not six months after the fact, but, you know.
Sure.
So I don't know.
Would it work, work in a summary fashion, so? Yeah.
So, uh, what I would recommend in response to, uh, Councilmember Campion's comment is under section three of the resolution to state that all settlements shall be reported in writing on at least a quarterly basis to the city council through, uh, to the city council period, so we could, uh...
Okay.
Or by, and by the risk manager, so strike through appropriate means.
Okay. Okay. Do we take, can we take these as two separate, or go one?
Um, if you could take them as separate, because of the ordinance.
Okay, let's start off with the ordinance. I have a motion. So moved. Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to number two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Campion?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Payne.
As amended, uh, by...
As amended?
As amended by the City Attorney.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Okay, unanimous. And a second reading will be at our next, next meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to regulations of massage businesses. Mr. Rudolph?
If, um, if you would do a, a web search relating to, uh, massage businesses, and look at, uh, the news articles over the last several years, what you would find is that all of the surrounding communities over the last few years have had difficulties with, uh, massage businesses, and this includes Lodi, El Grove, Citrus Heights, Ulsum, the City of Sacramento. And the problem that these cities have experienced with massage businesses is actually not with legitimate, uh, massage businesses. The problem they have is that oftentimes, these businesses are used as fronts for unlawful activity, uh, such as prostitution and human trafficking. And the purpose of, of the ordinance that is before you this evening is not to present a burden to legitimate massage businesses, but it is to try to minimize the, the opportunity for these illegitimate businesses to come to this community and locate here and, and present a problem. Um, what we oftentimes find in, in other areas is that when surrounding communities start to have, uh, problems, that ultimately it comes to our doorstep, and so this ordinance is being presented as a defensive measure to try to, uh, to head off that particular issue. The ordinance was drafted in a manner to try to reduce or minimize the burden that would be caused to the legitimate, uh, massage businesses within our community. So what this ordinance would require is first off, that anyone that wants to practice massage within this community would need to be a certified therapist. There are guidelines within the State Business and Professions Code, the state licensed massage practitioners and therapists, so if you want to, uh, engage in this business, first and foremost, you would have to be licensed by the state of California. For those folks that want to practice this business either through their home or on an out-call basis, the only additional requirement they would have is to register annually with the police department. There is no fee for that registration, they just need to let us know who they are and that they are registered with the state of California. They, for home occupation businesses, additionally, they would have to, uh, comply with our zoning code, and just like every business within this community, they would have to get a business license. For those individuals that want to set up an actual commercial establishment for, uh, massage, what they would have to do is to obtain a permit through the police department, and there's an opportunity for the city council to adopt a fee for that process. There's no resolution that is, uh, proposed, uh, adopting a fee this evening. And that process would be very streamlined, and there are only four grounds for denial of that permit by the, uh, chief of police, and the grounds are items like, you know, felony convictions, and, you know, lying on your application, and having, uh, criminal issues, being under investigation for prior businesses. But other than those types of problems, the, uh, the permit would in fact be issued by the police department. The business would be required to comply with certain, uh, health standards in the operation of the business. They would be required to, uh, close by 10 o'clock at night and not open until 7 o'clock in the morning. They would be required to keep records of the, the customers that they serve and the, uh, massage therapists that they employ, and they would be required to have their business inspected by the police department, subject to reasonable notice. So those are the requirements that are, uh, established by this ordinance, and the hope is that by establishing, uh, reasonable standards for the operation of legitimate massage businesses within our community, that this will, uh, discourage others from attempting to, uh, come to our community with, uh, less than, uh, less than lofty goals. So with that, I'd be happy to, uh, respond to any questions that the council has. Again, this ordinance is presented for, uh, introduction, uh, to wait full reading and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption.
Very good. Council, questions?
I have, uh, clarification on this. We, we talk about massage businesses will be required to comply with health and safety standards. Does that mean the health department would, or could, um, inspect their premises, if they actually have a premises?
Um, this ordinance is not intended to add or detract from any authority the health department might have, but within this particular, uh, ordinance at, uh, section 56060, there are health and safety requirements, and, you know, the, the things that are in here, for example, there's quite a list, but, you know, provide for the regular removal of garbage, uh, you know, launder all materials after use by a particular client, maintain bathroom facilities, provide wash stations, so those are the types of, uh, requirements that are built into this, uh, this ordinance.
So who would enforce those, if everything's...
So that, they would be enforced by the, uh, by the city, by the police department through, uh, periodic inspections. And there's nothing that's very, you know, very, uh, technical about it, it's really just a matter of, you know, walking through the facility and, and seeing if, uh, if it looks like it is a clean and orderly, orderly business.
So where does the health and safety requirement come from?
So, um, these are, uh, these are, um, provisions that, some of which come out of, uh, state, out of state law, under the Business and Professions Code. Uh, some of the other ones are, um, requirements that have been adopted by, uh, surrounding communities for the regulation of their massage businesses. I also forgot to mention that I did pass out, uh, in a radish sheet for this ordinance, uh, this evening before the meeting, there was a few, uh, minor corrections. It's a one, it's just a one sheet, and, uh, just to clean up some wording and, uh, typographical errors.
How are we going to go about, or are we going to go about notifying existing, uh, certified massage therapists in town for the registration purposes?
Well, um, we certainly can, uh, can, uh, contact them. I think that the number of businesses, um, that I'm aware of is somewhere between two and four businesses, so, uh, we certainly would, uh, reach out to them and make them aware of the, the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay. April?
Yeah, I have a question, um, and it's only because it's unclear to me. On, under, uh, 56040, massage establishment commits, number three, it says the massage establishment obtains a use permit if required, as required by the city development code. So, I guess my question, is it, is it, is it, is it required? I mean, it's unusual to see a use permit requirement within the context of an individual ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
It would be by zoning classification rather than, than, uh, dictated in the ordinance that establishes the regulation itself. I'm not opposed to it, but I don't know, you know, there may be different zones, and I'm not familiar with the code at this point to know where massage parlors are or are not allowed.
Yeah, so the purpose of this ordinance is not to, um, to impose an additional use permit requirement. There definitely is a business permit requirement.
Right.
But, uh, the, the purpose in having this statement in here is just to reinforce the fact that if there is a use permit requirement by virtue of the city's development code, that, uh, obtaining the permit through this particular mechanism in 040 does not replace that requirement. The use permit would be a separate and standalone requirement.
Okay. So it's informational?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all I have. Here goes a, a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
City Manager's Office, financing strategy of Fourth Street Old Town Railroad property improvement. Mr. Bearman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the city has pursued a strategy for several years of revitalizing, revigorating the Old Town Downtown area of the city. Part of that strategy is to improve the railroad property. We've done that through a variety of, of means, uh, most recently with the Quiet Zone that's currently under construction. Uh, we also secured a lease with Union Pacific Railroad a couple of years ago, back in 2013. Uh, back in 2011, we hired Calendar and Associates to develop a plan that you see up here on, on the screen, which was open space, landscaped parking lot area, about 120 spaces, improvements along Fourth Street, um, point to some of the different, different things. There's the new, uh, crossings, crosswalks, new sidewalks, all on the frontage, streetlights, landscaping along the, the path, and as well as, again, the parking lot area here. There are also additional improvements up on C Street, on Lincoln Way, and up closer to Pacific Drive. As a result of that, we started pursuing, um, how we're going to fund these projects, and we didn't have enough money to do all the projects. And we didn't have enough money to do all the projects, so we focused on these Old Town improvements here along the railroad tracks, as well as some up here on C Street, just west of Lincoln Way. And we were going to fund the projects through several different funding sources. One was we were successful in securing a $2 million grant from SAICOG to provide a good chunk of money. We also have CDPG, Community Development Block Grant Funds. We get about $150,000 a year for that funding. And the bulk of the money was going to come from redevelopment. And everybody knows what happened to redevelopment. Governor and the state of California killed redevelopment agencies across the state. And so we're left finding other means of financing this project. And so what we did was we split the project in half. And we did it for a couple of reasons. One was because we lost redevelopment funding, but the other reason was because the SAICOG grant money had specific requirements. And so all of the work you see along Fourth Street, the crossing improvements, the sidewalks, the streetlights, landscaping along here, kind of in the city, most of it's within the city right away, although not all of it, as well as the work up here on C Street between Lincoln and Sixth Street, that's largely funded through the grant that we received, as well as some CDPG funds for design, as well as some Measure A funds, I believe. And so we're proceeding with that project. We have the funding in place. Design is almost done. Environmental is done and out for public review right now. We're hoping to have that project under construction in 2016, so next year in the spring. If the funding, and we'd be ready to go earlier than that, but there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through with the various agencies, especially when it's different state money and SAICOG requirements. So if we can get the money advanced sooner, we will, but our current timeframe has us building that portion of the project about this time next year, at least being out to bid. So that leaves the most of the railroad property, this large green space that you see adjacent to the fence, and how are we going to fund that? And so we have, this report is intended to provide the council with different options and a recommendation on how we're going to do that. CDPG funding is probably the remaining large funding source that we have. We get about $150,000 a year. SHRA, which is Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, allows us to get an advance on those funds. And so we can get several years' worth of that funding at the front end. So in conversations with them, we could probably get four or five years' maybe worth of funding if we wanted to, get that money advanced. That'd provide approximately $600,000 in funding to move a portion of that project forward. Grant funding is another option that we might have. We're not aware of any good grant options at this point. It's hard to find grant money for this type of beautification project. It's not related to transportation. It's not related, a lot of grant monies are related to active parks, they're related to transportation, ADA accessibility, other types of things. So there are some monies out there, and we will continue to look for those, but there aren't a lot of good candidates at this point that we've been able to identify. The other large funding source that is out there is Park Quimby Funds that we do have available to us. We do have some money that we can use towards open space and landscaping. That is part of the Park Master Plan. It allows or provides funding for open space acquisition, as well as development and beautification. And so again, this wouldn't be developed as an active park space, but it would be a nice beautifully landscaped area, open space area, that could be enjoyed by the community. So the city could use a portion of that park money to help develop this site, this railroad property site. We have a large chunk of that park money, Quimby Fund, that's earmarked towards Walker Park Phase Two or Phase One B, which is the two baseball fields, new restroom facility, additional parking, and the completion of the roadway through there. And so we don't want to take money away from that project in order to do this project. But we think, based on current development impact fee projections, that we may have enough money, at least to get, you know, $600,000 or so of park money available by 2016, 2017 in order to do that project within that timeframe. Of course, a lot of it depends on development and how quickly we grow, but based on current projections, that's when we feel like we would have sufficient money to continue to build Walker Park. And Walker Park is supposed to be under construction next year, next summer sometime hopefully, and that there would still be enough money the following year to potentially put towards this in addition to the CDPG funds. So that'd give us about $1.2 million potentially for this. Now originally, that whole park area was about a $3 million project, with the parking area, $700,000, and the remaining $2.2 million was the rest of the landscape area. So staff feels that, for a variety of reasons, we would be better served proceeding with the revised design plan for that park, as opposed to waiting for potentially multiple years in order to do something. And so what we suggest is bringing back Calendar or another landscape architect to help us redesign that area with a reduced budget. Also, we all know that what's happened, you can see there's a lot of green space out there, right? And with the drought, doesn't really make sense for us to be putting and planting all that lawn area. And so to have a reduced budget with drought tolerant features in mind, maybe more hardscape type of features, some trees and shrubs that could be drip irrigated without the large lawn grass areas, we think makes a lot of sense. Bring in, again, a consultant or a designer to help us come up with that plan. Now, we've got a budget of $1.2 million. Maybe the parking lot area isn't developed to the same standards that it was in here with some of the landscaping or the hard surfaces. Maybe we end up having to put in crushed gravel or rocks or something as an all-weather surface on a temporary basis until we have funding to develop the entire master plan that we've put together. At least allow us to move forward with some of the projects and needs while we have, you know, as we have money that's available. And if we can secure grants or other things, allow us to do a little bit more, then we can do that. So the suggestion would be that we do bring in a landscape architect to help have some initial community meetings, have some meetings down in the Old Town with some of the business owners, and find out what the priorities are, what they would like to see down there, obviously what the council would like to see developed down there within the budget, and have them come back with two or three options for us to take a look at, say, okay, here's option A, here's option B. Maybe there's other things out there based on the feedback that we received. And then get some feedback from council at that time. We do have sufficient funds in the budget to move forward with the initial design, conceptual design work. We've got some CDPG monies that will allow us to move on that right away. We could go ahead and get them on board, start that conceptual design process this summer, and then have some ideas back for the council. And one of the thoughts is we put up that fence, those requirements of the Union Pacific Railroad, and getting comments from the community about the look and appearance. And so I think the sooner we can get some landscaping up, at least around the fence, that would certainly be welcomed by members of the public. And so the thought is that if we can develop kind of a master plan, revised master plan with the reduced scope, et cetera, then maybe we can proceed with the Phase A to get some landscaping initially in around the fence, and then proceed in potentially 2016 and 17 to do the remainder of the parking lots, as well as some of the other open space features out there. And if other grant monies come along between now and then, then great, and we can do more work. But we feel confident that we could have at least a $1.2 million project down there. And just another, I guess, I don't know if it's a long shot or a wishful thinking, but the governor just released his May revised budget for the state of California, and in it was another revised proposal for redevelopment agencies. And part of that proposal was to, under certain conditions, to allow agencies to spend their, at least a portion of their 2011 bond proceeds. So there's a chance that that may come about in the next, who knows? And I'm not going to really hope for it because I think it's still a long shot, but something could come along, whether it's grant funds or whether a portion of those RDA funds could be made available, that we could do a little bit more, even if it doesn't look like this because, again, I think the large lawns are a thing of the past, regardless of what the funding is going to be. I just don't see us ever putting that type of development in, that type of project again. So that's the staff's recommendation. Alternative is to wait and try to get more of the grant funding, wait to do a larger $3, $4 million project. But again, our recommendation is to go in right away, start to get some of the conceptual designs out there, do a smaller limited project later this year, and then do a larger project in 2016, '17 based on the funding that I've outlined, CDPG funds and the park funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions with the council.
Counsel, any questions?
I would say that as soon as possible, we need to do something in the way of landscaping along the fence, and hopefully not have to wait for a special grant or something. I'm sure we've all heard comments about how quickly it is.
Yeah.
And we're working so hard and making some really nice progress down there in Old Town on Fourth Street. So I would say that needs to be like an immediate priority to do something to make the fence less trivial.
Would be, well, the landscaping is going to be all part of either the conceptual design and then the subsequent design, correct? I mean, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, Barbara. I think we do need to move on it, but I think we need to get the conceptual design to get some idea of what's the overall scheme going to be, rather than going out there and, you know, putting in some plants to cover the fence, which I agree needs to happen, but I think we need to go through that step and take a look at it because I think going from a $3 million project to a $1 million project effectively, there's going to be some real compromise. And I think we're going to need to have something to look at to make sure that, you know, the community and council is satisfied. But I don't think that the, what I think could happen at that point is you cut out the landscape and figure out what you want to use to cover that and move forward with that, and you can worry about the rest of it later.
I thought we already had some kind of idea about what we were going to do in front of that fence when we approved the fence.
That's it.
That's it.
The whole thing.
But we need to revise, so the plan, or our recommendation is that we move forward quickly and do the conceptual design so we know what the plan is going to be. And then there could be an initial Phase A, which says, let's just get the landscaping portion of the fence done quickly, and then if there's some other, because we're not going to have enough money to do it all right away, but we can certainly, I think, get the landscaping done closest to the fence. But at least if you don't do conceptual plans, you could be putting in plants or things in areas that don't fit in with the master plan, the conceptual plan. If you just go and put different kinds of plantings in willy-nilly, it may not fit with the ultimate desires of the council and the community and with the master plan. So if you can get the master plan or conceptual done, then you can carve out an initial phase and just do that for the fence quickly, and then follow it up with the rest of the landscaping as you have money in the future.
So Jason, do we not have anything on this landscaping plan that we could use on the fence that would fit in with whatever's coming up?
Let's just show him green bushes.
Yeah.
I'd really like to see it moving forward using native drought tolerant, some sort of landscaping design that incorporates those items into the design. Just often look at it. I'd really like to see a conceptual design, because I'd really like to get a landscape architect to look at the need for the hardscaping and drought tolerant and native plants so that we can actually make it something that will stand on the fence.
Strokes.
How much did this cost? I'm sorry. The design, how much did that cost?
That was back in 2010, 2011. I really, I don't remember. And it wasn't just for this. Remember, it was to do conceptual design for Lincoln Way, for Civic Drive, for the whole Old Town downtown area. So I don't recall what that, what the cost was for that.
And so what are we proposing to spend for consultants?
So the conceptual design, let me see. This is about $25,000. Is the estimate.
How much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for the conceptual.
And then the design's another $125,000. So we're looking at, what, a million-two?
Right, a million-two for the project.
And you're including Son Quimby, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay, that's okay, whatever. Whatever, I just wanted to let you know before it's all over.
Right there.
So are we now just calling it a landscape area instead of a park? Because before we were looking at it as like a park. It just doesn't look like a park to me. It looks like just landscape.
Well, with the railroad lease, the railroad will not allow us to call it a park. It cannot be an active park. They do not want people near the tracks. And so when this was designed, you can see there's no trails in there, there's no, there's no ice structures.
With that whole area?
That whole area. So that's...
What if the other side where we had all the grass and the flag and all that? That's not, that can't be a bathroom place anymore either. Somehow I miss things. I was really looking forward to the gazebo.
There's a little, is a gazebo there? Isn't that?
There was, and then the railroad made us take it out.
Okay, so that's not incorrect. Okay.
Wow.
Yeah. I don't know, does it have?
The bandstand is, yeah.
I think it's just a large concrete area. There's no gazebo in it anymore. At one point, there was much, there was a little amphitheater, and there was, you know, and then as we got into discussions with the railroad, they said, no, 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 no. And that was, you know, four, five years ago.
I'll say that that was taken out long before we got in conversation with railroad. That was taken out because of the elements that it attracted, unfortunately. But I tend to agree. That's actually a piece of history for our city. It'd be nice to find a way of preserving it.
A what?
That bandstand area that you're talking about. And you know I'm going to touch on the other object. The turntables out there that was part of the Union Pacific, I really think we should find a way of pursuing that as well. Whether it's part of this or not, there's information that I'm going to provide council at the next council meeting regarding the preservation of things like that with certified local government. And I think it'd be a good idea to weigh that in as well, that's additional monies we can use for it. As far as Department of Finance and the government, you know where I stand on that. They're dangling the carrot. We're not going to see a dime.
Well, they're only going to let us, I can't see much hope, but I guess we could work on it, getting that turntable up, but...
Well, so basically it can't come up, I mean, what I'm saying is it's going to be a public space. It's going to be a landscape area.
It's supposed to be an escape, open space. It's not a place the kids are out throwing a ball or kicking a soccer ball around.
They have a best out here, say, landscaping.
It's a landscape beautification.
Like it is along any freeway or...
Yes.
Which is a disappointment because way back when we had the plans and everything for it to be something much different. That's why.
So I think that's why we need to go back and come back with your conceptual plan about what that needs to look like.
As far as the conceptual plan, will we have one alternative or a couple of alternatives?
Yeah, a couple of alternatives.
Couple of alternatives to look at? Okay, good.
That's the plan, yeah.
Then I would make a motion to, unless there's any other comments.
I have one more question. Do you have a timeframe estimated on this?
The conceptual design, if we get approval from council tonight, we can get, we already have a proposal from Calendar and Associates to get moving on that. We can get that going over the next several months. Probably take, you know, three or four months to get that finished, get it approved, and then maybe we could get some trees planted during the fall/winter months, when, best time to plant anyways. We don't want to be planting in the summer, so that would be the goal.
I guess we can get used to the fence.
Oh, I never, it'll be that then.
We'll just kind of look at it after.
Oh, yes.
And four of us cruise by it every day. Mark, you don't.
What's that?
Four, I said four of us cruise by it every day.
Oh, I see it about twice a week.
And the property owners along haven't made comments, but...
Yes.
Yeah.
They need sunglasses in the afternoon.
Yeah, they glare. Maybe that'll go all the time, but we still need to do some, I mean, we need to do something to, you know, help...
I'd probably like the idea of having kids pay an earl on there.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $25,000 for the conceptual design. Hold off on any other funding programs until we...
The money's actually already in the budget, so it's just to direct staff to proceed with the conceptual design, and then we'll go step by step after that.
Second that motion.
Okay, so motion currently...
Oh, the $25,000 is?
Right.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's actually more. We have money in the budget for the CDPG, $150,000.
Okay.
That'll allow us to move forward with conceptual and...
And design if necessary. Okay.
So do you want me to do motion at the council?
Could you just tell what CDPG money has to be used for? Because it's a bummer, kind of what it has to be used for in this city because we're so small. It can't go to, like other cities have it for, they distribute it with a lot of the nonprofits in town and...
So we're not what's called an entitlement city. Entitlement cities are 50,000 population or more, and they get a direct allocation from HUD. And they can use that towards some capital projects, but also towards nonprofit funding, other social service activities within the community. We get our funding through Sacramento County, through SHRA, and they direct or restrict how we use the funds for capital projects only. And so there's other... And so, there's other options for the city. We could choose to go out and compete on an annual basis for various HUD grants. But we've elected for many, many years to go through SHRA and get a direct allocation. We're guaranteed, right now we're guaranteed $150,000 a year and we don't have to do a lot of the reporting. Again, it's not competitive. We just apply for it and we can use it for any type of public improvement that benefits low-income areas of town. So generally, anything in the Old Town, the Downtown, the West, you know, those areas qualify and so this certainly is eligible expense. We've used it for various projects over the years. We use it to build the parking lot down on Lincoln Way. We've used it for some water and sewer lines in the past and most recently the Quiet Zone was a project we used CDBG funding for and so this will be the next one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's actually been reduced for the recent years.
Yes, it used to be 200,000.
It was 200,000, yeah. So we have no guarantee that it's going to continue.
No. Again, it flows through the federal government. And the federal government reduced CDBG funding several years ago and when they reduced theirs, then the county reduced their funding to us as well as other jurisdictions, so.
Okay, so the current motion, could you repeat it, Mr. Campion?
So with the funding program as recommended, I guess that's through design because the rest of the monies haven't been allocated in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, we'll need to come back anyway to the design toward the contract and stuff, so.
So, your.
Just move staff's recommendations.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Motion by Mr. Campion. Do I have a second? Bye. Okay. Council member here. Call for the vote, please.
Hi, Senator Payne. Aye.
Council member Hewer?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passage unanimously. Community Development Department, opportunities and costs of processing a city-initiated annexation. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a project that we're working on, it's part of our economic development strategy that's trying to kick start. So, there are several purposes for us to be pursuing this project, at least pursuing further direction on this project this evening. First, the city's quickly running out of industrial. Second, is to obtain land use control over that industrial area and also Twin Cities Highway 99 gateway. And finally, to clean its boundaries and comply with LAPCO requirements for county islands in the city. So, a little while ago, we went ahead and hired Rainy Planning and Management to come up with what we call the White Paper to give us an idea of the opportunities and costs of the city initiating the annexation of three areas here in the city to basically bring in. The three areas here, I'll go ahead and point this direction, are an expansion of the industrial area. The three remaining corners of the Twin Cities Highway 99 corridor and also the county island here on the southern city along. And just to show you what it looks like on the general plan, plan use map, this is our sphere of influence and these areas are all within that sphere of influence. So the first area, the one that we're really concentrating on mostly, is the expansion of our industrial park. Right now, the city's boundary ends right here as does our industrial park. These are the remaining parcels here in the city. This one's actually number five here, is owned by LNL, is what we were discussing earlier and it's pretty much off the table at this point because they will probably expand instead of plant. So we're stuck with the last five parcels there that you see. That's only about 46 acres total. We've got a couple other industrial parcels throughout the city, but to expand this area, we have really run out of room for the large-scale development. So what we were looking at is basically this 220-acre area here, this is Walnut and it would expand up to the north of Walnut there, being consistent with the general plan, which calls for industrial out of that area. What this would allow us to do, the benefits would be to provide a city land use control over future development in this area. It would also make it more marketable because of the, this would now be within the city limit as opposed to developer having to work with the county and it would also save developers time and money by eliminating delays for developer-initiated annexation of the area. The Twin Cities Commercial, similar to the industrial expansion, would allow us land use control over this important gateway. Right now, we, wrong button. Right now, we control this corner here. We do have some property owner interest of annexing into the city, these three additional parcels here. They're all designated as commercial in our, on our land use map and would continue so if we annex it in. Then finally, as you are all probably aware, we have this last little area down here. It's a county island that's been existing for years with Lincoln Way running through the middle of it. We recently, a couple of years ago, had the Bay Area Oaks Development approved to the east here. However, access to that property has been an issue. Annexing into the city would allow us to have better control over getting annexed to this area and also allow the developers or potential property owners over here a potential development along the west side of Lincoln Way. It would also allow the property owners to have city services such as police and also water and sewer connections here in the city. Finally, it would allow us to comply with LAPCO requirements of simply cleaning up the boundaries of LAPCO and no longer allows county islands and this would take care of that particular problem. So the process, if the city was to pursue this as opposed to waiting for a developer to do so, would be similar to what a landowner would have to go through, which would be to complete an application to LAPCO, generate the document, resolution from you, allowing us to proceed and also provide a sequo document. As I showed you on that land use map, we're not proposing any land use changes at this point, so we would hope that we could use the EIR that was prepared in the general plan update a few years ago. But LAPCO would have, would basically have the last say as to what environmental document they would want to see with this, allowing us to proceed with the process. So again, some of the benefits would be allowing us to control the timing of the land available for additional industrial and commercial uses in the city. In other words, the city by initiating the annexation now could bring the properties into our actual city limit as opposed to a developer doing it sometime in the, you know, future and then having to coordinate that, which time is money for developer. So this would definitely make us a little bit better in terms of economic development strategy. Right, of the county processing development application. Although, I will say that usually the county does refer to a project as in that sphere. But this would certainly eliminate any potential conflicts. Again, it supports our economic development goal because it would allow us to then aggressively pursue and market this land development in the city. We would also be able to complete tax sharing negotiations with the county based on general land uses as opposed to a specific development application. Usually that development application, you know, exactly what the tax benefits would be and it could be a lot higher and say to the county, a lot harder for us to deal with in the future as opposed to just dealing with the generalities of the general plan land uses. And finally, we would receive tax revenue elements in the city. Now, there are direct and indirect costs that we do have to consider here. The direct cost would be the application costs at maybe about five to 10,000. Resolution, about 5,000. Preparation of the sequence document, again, it depends on what type of document it is. If it's simply a negative declaration, be about five to 10,000, but if it's an EIR, a new one, it'd be 75,000 to probably about 150,000. Tax sharing agreements, 25,000 or so and LAPCO staff costs are 25,000 to 50,000. However, keep in mind that staff most likely would be able to complete the application, the resolution and the tax sharing agreement, so the monetary cost would simply be a, basically the staff time to do people. However, we would most likely have a certain provision here on the environmental document for and we can't really dictate or anticipate exactly what the LAPCO staff costs would be. And there are also a couple of indirect costs too to look at. One is that because the city would be the applicant, we would not be indemnified against the reaction if the city deferred against the project application. Usually if developers come in, we're indemnified with this case. We, the applicant, would not be. The other would be the political cost, so to speak, if our citizens were making a response to the proposal. This would particularly come about with regard to the county island. There has been negative feedback in the past when this was discussed. And to avoid this, the city could pursue the annexation of the island separately of the industrial and commercial areas. LAPCO will, I think that's the county island. But at this point, we were just looking at that as bringing along for the time being. So our recommendation here this evening is to, I'm trying to consider what I just presented to you and provided Jason and I with further direction as to whether or not we should pursue all part of or none of the proposed annexation. If you do allow us to move forward, the next step would be Jason and I would meet and most likely the state would meet with LAPCO to age their acceptance of this and find out exactly what the requirement would be, the state's staff costs and whatnot. And then we would bring it back to a much more detailed analysis of the, basically the costs and any potential issues that comes out. Who's my, Jason and I?
Counsel? I, you know, generally I agree, particularly on the industrial part and the commercial. Are we calling it commercial or are we calling it industrial at Twin Cities? It would be commercial, yeah. I think, and it's important, I think you should talk to LAPCO to find out how they review those annexations. And in particular, I know you mentioned that you wanted to tear off the existing general plan EIR. I don't know whether they're, whether they're going to like that or not. I mean, you'd be lead agency. They're going to be a responsible agency, but they can be a tough responsible agency to get something passed. I would then gauge the temperature of the property owners in these areas because I think that's most important. Is, I think most of you know, if you have more than 12 registered voters, doesn't have to be a landowner, then it goes to, except with the exception of the island, I think there's special provisions there. You've got to go to a vote. And so I think it's important that then you carve up whatever you can to get, you know, the additional lands if those property owners are willing. But I think it's more important that we have willing property owners and I think it's an easier process all the way around.
Well, and of course, you know, if we don't have willing property owners, they could always derail the whole project anyway.
To a certain degree, they can and some yes, some no, but I think it's more important that you get out there and gauge that.
Right, and we could possibly do what we just did with the Eastview project, which is to have an open house.
Correct.
Property owners to educate them on the process and gauge whether or not they are willing to participate.
But I think it's important to talk to LAPCO too because they're going to have, you know, whatever their requirements are because they're going to ask and then we could at least, or staff could at least, you know, advise them what LAPCO's requirements, if any they are. Because the biggest question, most of them say, well, I don't want my taxes going up. Well, most people don't realize just changing jurisdictions does not change the property tax. They think that, for whatever reason, things change, but they don't. And actually, you know, they end up getting additional services. I mean, you know, by virtue of the city providing water and sewer and police protection, I think those are all added benefits that may help sell it. But I, I don't know, I think we should get some little bit better cost estimates on the upfront costs, like through the environmental process and particularly LAPCO, they've got all kinds of fees now and depending upon the size of the annexation, it could be based on acreage. I don't know what they're doing, but that can be fairly substantial, their fees alone. But, you know, I generally support it.
One of the interesting things that's going on right now with the drought is there's a lot of these shallow wells. Most of the people that live in the county island or the county area, they have relatively shallow wells. And there's a big fear, I think, now that some of those wells will start drying up, especially if the drought continues. The good thing about connecting the city services is our wells, one, they're at varying depths and we have our newest wells that go down 700 feet, but none of these other wells are going to get there. So it's possible that some of these other surrounding wells would dry out well while if they're connected to the city services, they're going to have a much more reliable source of water in future years. So that's, I think, a new benefit that a lot of people had never, hadn't considered much in the past.
I guess we have two citizens who want to speak on this. Dale Templeton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, thank you. We've spoken with Mr. Campion before and I do appreciate your comments on that. We have, I had gone through annexation attempts at the Gulf, the Cornell Road area. And I don't think there's a great deal of difference. I can't see any possible use in having a five, six, eight acre parcel and having the additional burden of city government telling me I can't use my archery range, can't use animals, can't use the land for anything because it just doesn't work. And cities in the past have done a lot of really kind of odd things, like where you put your trash cans or we don't want you to have artificial flowers in the front, Sacramento City. And personally, that's just one more layer of yard that we don't need. I think we have a great number of people on that road that would agree with me. Those who want to sell, and I understand that, I've been looking at Idaho for about 30 years, but I don't think I'm going to make it there. So, assuming I'm going to stay in that area, I will be opposing it and I believe that we'll have a number of papers and proposals. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Dale.
My name is Wendy Blevins. I have property ownership on Cornell Road and live in the city of Los Angeles, Delcourt. We have the properties in the county. We'd like to keep their county. We'd like to leave the ask if you want to try something like this. Just don't, just don't revolve us and stuff. We've bought this for 30 years. And we bought two years ago and came out on top and we have to, we'll do it again, but we'd like to, you know.
Can I ask you something? Do you get police service from the county sheriff?
I have their property. I don't need any police service.
Well, I just mean if you, if you needed service, who would you call?
I live in Gulf, so.
You live in the county?
I don't live in the county. I own a property there.
Oh, okay.
I have a house that is in county.
Okay.
There's nothing there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Payne, I do have an answer for you on that. If it's a 911 emergency call, we will go until the sheriff's department can get there. If they're not emergency calls, we refer those to the sheriff's department. That's how it works.
Okay, thank you.
I do appreciate the concern with leasing, however. My experience of 30 years of emergency services, fire department, is that typically the police get there after the event is cured. So it's our responsibility to take care of itself for that first five or six. And by then, I have to say, the Gulf Police Department has done an excellent job as far as covering our area. I would just sit and wait for the, I hope that's required.
Okay, thanks.
Russ, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? I did have two comment and one question. Mike, do you want to go ahead and go first?
Yep. I got you, General Park. I'm the.
I got you, General Park, I'm the mayor and council. Little different situation here. We own the property up there on these, on Twin Cities Road and Highway 99, where Softcom was and so on. And we would be all in favor of trying to get in the city. We've been, as you know, we've owned that property for probably 20 years or so, and we're wanting to get moving, moving forward on some kind of commercial entity. But as Kurt knows, the most important thing is that sewer and water scenario, and without that, you don't move very fast, because well and septic is not going to be the answer, and probably you wouldn't be able to do it anyway, because you'd be in the county of Sacramento. So in our situation, and I've talked to a couple of the landowners up there, they would be probably looking forward to going forward, something on the three parcels that surround the interchange there on Twin Cities Road. Thank you very much.
In that line, I think, and just my personal opinion, and I kind of fall on my, with what Kurt was just saying, before you do anything with the island, I would go out and do a serious survey of those people who live out there. It's one of those situations where they're happy where they're at, and I understand you're saying it's transparent, there's not going to be a big issue, but, you know, just off the top of my head, I can think of two things that are going to be a big issue. First one is, if they come within the city limits, they're going to be required to have water meters, am I not correct?
At this point, correct.
Yeah. On annexation, the city allows grandfathered uses to remain as they are if and when either their well or their septic failed. They can do routine maintenance, they can have a pump failure, but if the well itself ceases to produce, runs dry, or their leach field ceased to be affected, they would like to be required, if they're within 400 feet of public services, to connect to that.
I think we should do a real serious survey with people, let them know where they stand on it as far as what they want to do and what's available to them. And with that in mind, also, separate that from our annexation of the other properties, both the commercial and the industrial. That's the primary thing we should be looking at here. The other, it's convenience for Laffco, but it's not something that has to be done immediately. Talk to the people, find out what they want done first. And the last thing is, I'm looking at your map, and I'm a little bit confused. You said the top end was Walnut, is that correct? Because I'm looking at the boundary, and the boundary goes up to Spring.
Yeah. If we, Walnut would come along right, more outside of Walnut as well.
That's Spring Street where you've got your pointer.
So Walnut, I, well.
That's Walnut.
That's Walnut. So the question I have for you, you've got an auction there, have you had any contact with them? Because I really don't think Houston's going to be too wild about that. Just heads up. We need to do a little more digging as far as information, in my opinion. And that's all I have. Council, anything else? Do we have any approval or recommendation, or anything we want to put forward?
I think staff was looking for a motion to give some direction.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I think the first direction was what the consensus is here, is to talk to the property owners first and to.
Well, talk with Laffco.
Laffco and property owners.
Go ahead.
No, that's okay, let, like, Laffco and property owners. See what we have to do with Laffco and see what the property owners take it.
Could we prioritize that just on the commercial industrial at this point? Because I think that's the most important.
I agree.
For economic development, I agree.
Is that the form of motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I can repeat what you just said, focus on Laffco and the commercial and industrial portion at this point?
And the people that own the property.
And get.
Property owners.
Property owners' input, okay. Do I have a second?
We're leaving.
Okay.
Which property owners?
That's all that you've identified within the industrial expansion and the commercial.
Okay, we're not talking about the County Island?
No, we're not talking about the island at this point.
Right. We probably know what Laffco.
So the commercial and industrial section?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Motion was by Councilmember Powers, second by Councilmember Campion. Do I call for a vote?
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passed unanimously. Next up, I kind of lost my place here. Expedited permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar systems.
Thank you again, and at this point, our senior building inspector, John James, will give you a presentation of this ordinance.
Good evening. I'm just here to introduce an ordinance permitting the Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 15, adding expedited permitting, streamlining that as a part of an assembly bill that we just need to be in compliance with once the date of September 30th occurs. And basically, I've been here since 2008, and to date, we've issued 123 solar permits for rooftops. And since 2008, the submittals have gotten much better, the field inspections have gotten much better, the industry's just grown in a really positive direction. So this assembly bill is a good idea, and it's going to change the way we do business. We're going to do an over the counter plan check now, if it's 10 kilowatts or less. And then instead of doing two inspections, which we do right now, it's going to turn into one inspection. I'm not really too enthused about that, because with our two inspection process right now, we get to check waterproofing on the roof and rail attachments. And now with the Senate bill, the way this is written, we can only do it with one inspection, so it'll be a more in-depth inspection, kind of more burden on the builder, but we'll be able to work it out in the long run. So that's basically the whole deal line. We're going to be able to, they're going to be able to submit online, or by fax, or in person, one day turn around on plan checks, and then inspection within 24 hours of request. If you've got any questions, let me know. Questions from council?
How many panels would a typical 10 kilowatt alternating current consist of?
About 17.
That's big then.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. And they're typically, what, three feet by four feet in size?
Yeah, three feet by four feet, and I think they're about 70 pounds each, so. The way that they did this was for the over the counter permit, permitting, there's certain spacing on the standoff on the roofs, and they can't be elevated up, like, you know, when you're going downtown Sacramento, you see these crazy ones that look like kites, they have to be within a certain inches of the roof.
Oh, true.
And you don't have uplift.
Okay.
So there was a lot of engineering and thought that went into this streamlined process. And for someone to get an over the counter permit, it's not like they could just kind of design whatever they want, they have to fit a certain parameter of some kind of pre-engineered thoughts and ideals.
It's more of a, I guess, question, have they, is there a requirement where the direct current is to be placed in the attic? Now, once you've bundled all those cables, I mean, is there?
Yeah, like, once you enter the attic, then you have to have it in rigid conduit unless you're within 12 inches below the deck, that way a firefighter doesn't hit it with a chain saw.
Right.
But typically, people aren't even going in the attic anymore, because it's one more place for a leak, and then they don't have to run it the same way, they're trying to make it readily visible for the fire department to see where that conduit is, it has reflective stickers on it, and it's very apparent if you're on the roof to, when you're dealing with the direct.
So how do you deal with that with tile roof?
With tile roof, they just run it on, along the roof, and they have fittings now, they 'll tie into the roof that will hold the conduit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think we have a public speaker, Mike Cutridge.
Mike, I got you, General Park, I'd like to know is, what I'm concerned about is, I think we're going to go in there at some point, because the new code's coming out, but what concerns me is that it's going to be a one day situation, what are you going to do about the trusses and the truss deal, and like us, we have to have an engineer, have our trusses engineered by code. So now you're going to put, it's on top of it, and you're going to have a one day permit without not engineering the span.
So on that, what they did was they had a group of engineers decide what was appropriate for those roofs, so there's certain loadings and spacings that they're assuming based on the span that it will be able to hold. If you have a non-conventional truss roof, like a rafter roof, then you won't fit in that certain little box for the over the counter permitting. So depending on the roof, and that's on their checklist when they submit, if there's something like skip sheeting or rafters, then that already gets you out of this over the counter permit deal. So you have to meet certain parameters, like the truss roofs are, would be fine for it.
Yeah, but you still have to have the engineer, our engineer is, it's taken us three weeks to get an engineer report from the engineer, and he's very busy, because of all the trusses now have to be engineered, and that's, to me, that's a big thing, especially if you're talking about 17 panels. Three panels is one thing, 17's a whole different area. So I agree with John, I'm hoping you can do it over the counter, but to me, the engineering of the trusses is very important. Because, remember on tile roof, you've got 990 pounds per square on that roof.
So I think what their study showed is basically how much overengineering they've put on the builder, and they have that much wiggle room now for these solar panels, is basically the data that I saw on that.
Well, yeah, but I mean. True, but let's say they want, after we get done, finished with the house, and they come in and say they want to put panels on the roof, then now where you, the panels in relationship to the tile roof, where we are, where are you now? I mean, you're going to do it right over the counter, one day over the counter, aren't you going to have to be concerned about the weight of the material in relationship to the tile, and relationship to the heating and so on and so forth?
I think what John's saying is that they've built a box around what they assume is overengineered trusses, and therefore, as long as they fit within this box, there's an assumption that it'll carry the load.
Maybe so, Kurt, but you still have to.
Sure.
The trusses are engineered by, they say engineered by an engineer. Now, that was only engineered for tile roof, it wasn't engineered for something else other than that XYZ.
And, you know, I know, and you're not supposed to do anything in your garage with those trusses, but you see people put stuff up there all the time.
Yeah, but now we're in our situation for putting age trusses so people can do that.
There you go. Good idea, good idea.
Mike?
I'll give you a report on that, so you can kind of look further into it.
Okay. Any further questions from council? No. Okay, we can do this as one, I'm assuming. Okay, do I have a motion to introduce an ordinance permitting the Galt Building Code?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Hewer, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Unanimously spoke. Moving on to Finance Department, refunding of City of Galt reassessment District 1911-1 bonds.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and community members. This evening, staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution of intention to levy reassessments, to also adopt the tax resolution adopting the reassessment report, and thirdly, to adopt the tax resolution authorizing the issuance of limited obligation refunding bonds that will be known as reassessment district 2015-1. In summary, in 1999, the city issued just over $6 million of principal debt for limited obligation bonds to refinance the original bond. Currently, we believe that the low interest rate environment makes it possible for us to refinance this district and hopefully realize savings to the existing property owners in the district. By way of background, back in April 7th of 2015, council authorized that staff commence the proceedings to do the refinancing, basically also allow the city manager to enter into various agreements with members of the financing team, and also to commence work on the reassessment engineering report. Currently, just to bring you back up to where our current bonds are, the current amount of outstanding principal amount is $1,840,000. We have interest rates between the range of 5.75% to 5.9%. Our annual, or our maturity is scheduled for September 2nd of 2022. The financing approach right now is basically to reduce the annual and total amount of debt service to address the prior delinquencies within the district, to pay off and remove one open space parcel from the annual assessment. We are also currently working with one property owner of one parcel, which is delinquent, to facilitate the creditworthiness of the refinancing. And just in this pursuit, we are still evaluating this one parcel, if it should really stay, remain as a standalone within the existing district, or if it should be part of the refinancing of the new district. Again, we want to know what's in the best interest of all of the property owners, and from a credit perspective, this one property could be a negative, so we're still evaluating that, but we are bringing this forward, and we want to include this within the report this evening. So again, the financing approach is the amount of the par, amount of outstanding bonds is $1,840,000, so we couldn't issue any more than that. The term could not exceed the current term of 2022. The annual installments and principal and interest would have to be less than what it currently is on each parcel by parcel basis. The interest rate would not exceed 6%. We actually are hoping, we're going to be around a 4%, we're hoping that that actually might be better, based on the creditworthiness, if we can deal with that one parcel, if we have to present that to various banks, that could be a negative, so we're still evaluating that, but we're hoping that we might end up around the 4% mark. The timing of the refunding, hopefully if council approves, staff's recommendation this evening, that we could probably start some presentations as early as tomorrow, and price the bonds by the end of this month, and basically formalize the financing terms sometime next month in June, by the end of June. So summary of the documents are, the first resolution is basically to proceed with refunding of the prior bonds and levying the assessment. The second resolution that you have before you is basically approving the reassessment report, and that presents the annual installment, the term of the bond, and addresses the one open space parcel. The third resolution basically sets the parameters of the par amount of $1,840,000, that we cannot exceed that, and the form of the bond, basically foreclosure covenant and so forth. The fiscal impact, there is no financial impact to the city, excuse me, to the general fund. The city is not liable for any of the repayments of these bonds. Basically, the assessments are secured by a lien placed on the property within the district. We hope that the savings, or, excuse me, because of the savings are conditioned upon the interest rate at the time the bonds are actually priced, we are asking for the parameters, but we, again, we are hopeful that the savings will be around a 4% interest rate, and we hope that the savings will actually be more than what they are presented within the report. Let's see. What else do I want to present this evening? I am joined this evening by Dave Fama, who is foreign counsel, and I also have Eric Scriven, who is the financial advisor on this deal. So we are here to address any questions that you may have this evening. With that, we would ask that you approve staff's recommendations and approve the three resolutions as presented before you.
Council questions?
Did I read it here that you were trying to exclude that one parcel from the reassessment?
We're actually addressing two different items. One of them, there's an open space right now?
Right.
Okay, yes. The open space, because it's not of actual benefit to the property owners, we do want to exclude that from the assessment, there wasn't assessment in place, but it should be removed. And so, yes, that is presented in the refinancing.
Okay, thanks. That's all. Any further comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilmember Campion.
We're doing all three.
This will be all for all three, correct?
Yes.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Unanimously again. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on, Human Resources Department, approval of the City of Galt personnel manual as amended.
The Human Resources Department is absent tonight, so I'll be subbing in for Paula. Presented today is the approval of the City Personnel Manual as amended. The manual has not been amended for about two years, and we typically do bring an amendment forward to the city council after we conclude the MOU negotiations. an amendment forward to the City Council after we conclude the MOU negotiations. Uh, so the purpose of the amendments are, first, in order to maintain consistency between the MOUs and this particular document. Uh, secondly, there's been some changes in, uh, the various personnel laws over the last couple of years, and, uh, this, these amendments are to maintain compliance with state law. And then there are, uh, several changes that are made in order to clarify particular sections of the, uh, of the document, as well as to, uh, add some, some enhancements that we think are appropriate. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, review the changes in, in more detail if the City Council, uh, desires, um, but, um, at this point, I'd like to just, uh, indicate that it's presented, uh, tonight as a recommendation to adopt the resolution approving the City of Galt Personnel Manual as amended, and then just to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I have a series, if that's okay, unless someone else wants. Um, on the, uh, under the section two point two point, uh, it's on page three, I believe, of mine, of the document, respectful workplace, two point two point three. And I, I did have a conversation earlier today with the city attorney, um, in, in this, in the third paragraph, it's, it just, the way it's presented with the bullet points where identifies very specific, um, items, uh, or, or types of behavior that are deemed inappropriate and unacceptable, and I do agree with that, but some of them, uh, at least the way they are characterized, I, I, I just, I, I, I think that a more general statement of this entire paragraph would be, uh, more appropriate, uh, because even in the first paragraph, it says inappropriate and unacceptable behaviors are defined as negative and aggressive acts. Well, they can be negative or aggressive. It doesn't have to be both of them. Um, I think a description of these types of behavior would be better, rather than identifying, you know, calling people offensive nicknames, or, um, you know, making accusations that can't be documented. I mean, that, that's kind of common sense stuff, i- is the way it appears to me, and I think that, uh, by, by making it, uh, i- i- in a paragraph, uh, and, and I don't know that it needs to go into that much detail. I mean, that's just my own, my own thoughts. And then further down, it says department heads and supervisors will, and provides three examples of what they will do. I don't know that that should be the limiting factor on department heads. I think the paragraph above that, or the sentence above it, it talks about what their responsibilities are. Maybe you expand on the responsibilities, but again, you bolded three i, three specific items, and to me, it just, I don't think it's inclusive enough, and, and I think it's, uh, too specific, and, you know, it could either work, you know, towards the, to the benefit of the city, or not to the benefit of the city. So that's my concern. So I, I, I think that rewriting those sections would be appropriate. Um, under, under, or on page six, under administration and interpretation of rules, um, the changes, the city manager is authorized to decide any questions involving the interpretation or application of any provisions of this manual, and consistent with the rules, standards, and requirements of this manual. I would like to suggest that that be subject to City Council ratification. The City Council is here tonight approving all of these changes, and I think it's appropriate that the council, uh, approve or ratify, you know, interpretations made at the management level. I mean, obviously, he's, he would present a report. Council, all likelihood is going to agree, but I think it's a report, it's a document, it's approved by council, and therefore, any changes should be approved by, by council.
Um, Councilmember Campion, do you want me to, I have a couple of comments. I didn't know if you wanted me to hold off until-
Sure.
You've completed your-
Oh, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I think that, you know, on this particular one, on, on two point eight, that, uh, any time a, a city official is tasked with the administration of either an ordinance or a policy that, uh, implied within that direction to administer the document is the, uh, the obligation to undertake certain amount of interpretation in, in implementing that, that, uh, policy. And, you know, I, I think, uh, in this particular policy, the city manager who is tasked with the administration of these rules, um, has been undertaking a bit of, uh, you know, from time to time, um, interpretation of this, uh, this policy as issues, as issues arise. And, uh, I think that the, the change that was proposed there was to just memorialize what actually has been occurring over the last several of years, and if that particular addition is problematic to the council, the recommendation would be just to take that change out and leave section two point eight as currently drafted.
Then what happens in the case of an interpretation? I think that begs the question, what happens?
Every single one of our ordinances, rules, zoning codes, there's a certain amount of daily, um, review and interpretation by staff, and it's infeasible that every time there's, we need to go back to the council for, for clarification on something. The staff is tasked with administering the policies and ordinances adopted by the council. There has to be some, some, certainly if there's a big, there's a big question, or we're not, I don't have the authority to change anything in here, um, but I think, you know, to the extent that, that every time there's a, there's a question that comes up, we need to go back to the council to clarify, um, would be burdensome. And so I think, I, I agree with Steve, that I think, I think it's just better to take that off if there's a concern by the council, and just leave it to the city, city manager as a responsibility to administer the policy and leave it at that.
I, I guess I, I interpreted it to mean not the day-to-day. I, I was thinking of the more significant policy changes.
That wasn't the intent of it. Yeah, this is just day-to-day.
Okay, well, that, that, you know, I, I, I read it differently, uh, because it just says the interpretation or application of any provision. Um, and I, I looked at it more if there was a problematic issue. Uh, and more than likely, if there was a problematic issue, there'd probably be a grievance.
And we'd be coming back probably clarifying with the council.
Okay, okay. Well, then if that's the case, then I would agree with you. Just, just strike it. I would agree.
Do you want to go back to that first comment?
Oh, yeah.
Did you have a comment on that as well, Steve?
Um, yes, I do. Um, so after our opportunity to talk today, I did, uh, I did discuss some of the, the comments with Paula, and, um, you'll notice that there, in this area, two point two three, two point two four, two point two five, um, she had done some, quite a bit of research in looking at what other, other cities, uh, have in their documents, uh, particularly some of the surrounding cities, in order to, uh, enhance this particular area of our document on respectful workplace, violence, whistleblower protection. And so these were some, uh, sections that she, uh, found in some other, other documents that she thought were, uh, appropriate for the City Council to consider. And as it pertains to two point two three and the, the listing of, uh, particular examples, um, she felt that by including these, that, um, it added a little bit of definition to the, to the policy as opposed to not having any examples, but that, um, if it was the council's desire to, in fact, uh, you know, strike those, uh, bulleted items, that her opinion was that it still left the policy intact, and she didn't have any, uh, strong opinion one way or another, if that was the council's desire.
Well, I, I just look at them, and, and one of them is like public reprimands. Well, what, what's the definition of a public reprimand? Is that two people standing, uh, around and someone, uh, saying something that could be interpreted as a, as a reprimand? I mean, that could be in an office setting, it could be in the parking lot. I mean, I don't know. I don't, I really, it, it, so it just kind of raises more questions. Um, it says repeatedly accusing someone of errors that cannot be documented. I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, it, I, I don't, I guess I've never experienced that application of, of that particular type of violation. Um, is, I, I, you know, are these things that she took from other jobs or other documents, or are these, that, that's the case?
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't, I mean, oh, this isn't something, okay, we dealt with this last year or this year.
Okay. These were taken from another policy, another city had.
Well, I don't know, maybe you could take a look at it at least, and, uh, but I, I, some of them just didn't make a lot of sense to me. Public humiliation in any form, well...
We really don't have any concerns if the council wants to remove those, because it addresses up at the top, it says, you know, negative, inappropriate, uh, aggressive behaviors, and so I think we can reasonably interpret what that is.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I do have a, I, I agree with another comment that you made on the second paragraph, which you said all complaints of negative, instead of and, it probably should be or-
Right.
-inappropriate behaviors, because it could be either one, it doesn't have to be both. So I would agree with that one as well. Um, and then the same with the supervisor department heads, the, the, the bulleted item below, I think it covers what the department heads and supervisors' responsibilities are in the paragraph above, but it says they have responsibility to ensure that appropriate behaviors are being exhibited without providing the examples.
Right.
So maybe a cleanup recommendation before we move on on this section would be to delete from the word, uh, inappropriate and unacceptable behavior, um, through the end of the bulleted items. I think that, that next sentence, these types of behaviors are well-recognized as having damaging effects. I think that, um, modifies actually the paragraph above, you know, right?
Right.
So I would suggest maybe leaving that sentence in-
Okay.
And then, uh, delete, uh, department heads and supervisors will, and then the, uh, three bulleted items. Would that be acceptable?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And then in the, uh, in the second paragraph, all complaints of negative and inappropriate, change that to negative or inappropriate.
Or aggressive.
Or aggressive acts, yeah.
Negative, comm, aggressive, or inappropriate.
Right, so all complaints of negative, inappropriate or aggressive workplace behaviors. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
Yeah, on page thirteen, under section five point one, classification plan, and it's really, I'm just not sure where a sentence goes. If you go past that, and on to page fourteen, the first one, two, three paragraphs are struck out, and then there is a sentence that is partially struck, and there's a change. It says where, uh, required by law, the city will comply with, uh, any meet and confer responsibilities. In looking at the two sections under the classification plan, I guess it could fall there, or it could fall under adoption amendment revision of plan. So I don't know where it was supposed to fall, uh, unless that's the correct location.
I would just, I would recommend taking that sentence and moving it to the end of five point two. I mean, we've already completed a meet and confer as it relates to the document before you this evening. If we have any future amendments, we would go through that process.
Under the amendment or-
Under the amendment.
Amendment process.
I would move that sentence to the end of five point two.
Okay. Then on, uh, page- This is just a, I, I don't know if it's a personal preference in, in, or something that, uh, was a practice in the city a number of years ago. This is on page, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. It says selection process. The selection process here does not involve, uh, the departments, the affected department in any fashion until such time as HR has developed a list of qualified candidates to be interviewed. And, and I'm not saying that it's a bad process, but I think a better process is to incorporate, um, the department, the affected department, in determining who gets, uh, what applications are pulled to be considered for the position. I think that, that the department head or the supervisor, whoever the affected individuals, knows what, you know, technical requirements or background, and they may, they may have a better understanding than a, than an HR person does. So I think to, I, what I'd like to see is the process modified to incorporate that in some fashion. And then, obviously, whatever the key, whoever the candidates are, they, I know that the city uses outside, uh, interview panels, which is a, a good practice. It's transparent, um, and I think that's a good practice. But I think that there needs to be input as to who actually gets in that final, final slot, and that's, that's just, it just makes common sense to me, so.
So I did get clarification from, uh, Paula on that particular process, and, um, what she explained to me is that after HR goes through the initial process of determining minimum qualifications, that in any, um, any selection process, that there is in fact a subject matter expert from the department that, uh, will go over the, the list of candidates and work with HR in determining, uh, the people that are going to be, uh, interviewed. So typically, you know, if it is, for example, a, uh, public works, uh, recruitment process, the public works director would, uh, either directly or de, or delegate somebody in his department to work with HR to, uh, uh, scan those applications and determine which folks would be, and how many of those folks would be, uh, invited for the interview process. So, um, I think that actually is, is occurring right now, whether or not it is, uh, fully represented in eight point four.
Okay, because I didn't find it as a, as part of the written policy, but if that's a matter of practice, then, you know, maybe we ought to think about incorporating it somehow.
That's what we're doing, and I think the policy says basically the city manager and/or designated, and that's essentially what I've done, is delegated that down to the department so they can, they can choose the individuals, like Steve said. HR just kind of does the initial screening to see if somebody hasn't met the minimum qualifications, and then the department goes through and selects who they want to interview.
Uh, the next one was on page twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, this is under group medical, dental, life, division insurance. Uh, the change there is that, um, when a, uh, full-time employee is eligible, dependents may participate in Cal First, participation is mandatory. And I think this kind of rolls over to the next page, where it talks about for those individuals who do not opt for the city's medical benefits, uh, they receive a stipend, a monthly stipend, but also they lose this, the dental insurance. And I was wondering why we made that change, and if, if so, what is the cost, projected cost savings on something like that?
So the reason that we, uh, we made that change, and we, and this was actually negotiated with each of the, uh, employee groups through the MOU process, is, uh, in, in prior years, when we had different dental coverage, there was no potential economic benefit to the city, uh, in reducing the number of employees on our dental coverage. But under our current program, um, we do have the ability to reduce those folks that are covered, and it does result in a potential savings to the city. So the, the policy that we negotiated with the unions, and you find in the, uh, in this partic, particular document under section eleven point three I, is that if you have an employee who chooses to waive medical coverage, that they also are required to waive dental coverage unless they would not be covered by another program. So we don't want to leave somebody without dental coverage, but if they have dual coverage, at the same time that they waive medical, they need to waive dental. And the, uh, Paula didn't have the precise numbers with her, but, uh, she indicated that the, the, uh, estimated, uh, annual savings to the city by, uh, implementing this program is in excess of twenty thousand dollars a year.
Oh, okay. Could, could she provide that information to council, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Under, or on page thirty-seven, uh, this is under requirements of attendance, uh, and it talks about employees are expected to report to work on schedule, on time. Um, it says late arrival, early departure, or other absence from scheduled hours are disruptive and must be avoided. I agree that they should be avoided, but I don't know that must, I mean, must almost seems like it hangs on a potential disciplinary action if you have a flat tire on the way to work.
So I'd recommend maybe we change the word must to should.
Should, should, yes. On page thirty-eight, uh, the last paragraph, uh, under section thirteen point one, the same paragraph, it says, "Except in extraordinary circumstances and except as provided in section twelve point oh seven." I could not find twelve point oh seven, so I don't know what the reference is.
I don't see a twelve point oh seven, so-
That's where that's from.
I would recommend just deleting the phrase "and except as provided in section twelve point oh seven."
As provided in this section?
I would just say except in extraordinary circumstances.
An employee?
An employee.
Okay, okay. Um, next page on thirty-nine, actually, it's on page forty, it's under, uh, leave of absence without pay, uh, sub E, it says, uh, used to say- Sub E, it says, used to say, no, it's, used to say, upon return from an authorized leave of absence, the employee shall return to the position he or she vacated or comparable If the former position is not available. It now says, if available, so it appears to dilute the purpose of having a leave of absence without pay, if I'm reading that correctly. It appears that, you can get a leave of absence, and you may or may not have a job to come back to, and I don't think that's the intended purpose of a leave of absence.
So after discussing that with the city manager and Paula this afternoon, we would recommend withdrawal of those changes and just leave the language as currently drafted.
Okay, thank you.
And the same for pregnancy leave in 13.6.
So those will just be deleted, or?
Yeah, just go back to the original.
Well, so.
The balance of these sections.
Yeah, that's a brand-new section.
Right.
So under F2, it would just state that upon return from an authorized, from an authorized pregnancy, disability, maternity leave, the employee will be reinstated to her same position, period.
So no, no conditional return.
Right, so eliminate unless legitimate business reasons prevent reinstatement.
Yeah. Oh, the other side, and then just an overall question. They removed the drug-free workplace from the personnel policy. Is there a reason we wouldn't put all of those types of policies in one document, where you can go, where the employee would have access to whatever the harassment policy, the policy on harassment, the drug-free workplace? I mean, it makes sense that you would have that in a binder in its entirety.
We do, I mean, we provide all the different, because we have a lot of different policies.
Right.
We have an IT policy, we have a reimbursement policy, we have a lot of different policies, and so we provide all that to the employees when they start. The personnel policy is just one of those, those areas.
Okay, okay. Other than that, those are my only comments.
Okay. Anything else? I want to throw this one out there, because there's going to be a lot of amendments.
I would, I would make a recommendation to approve with the, my recommended changes, and those of the city attorney.
So just, just so we're, the record's clear, the, we're going to modify section 2.2.3, deleted the change language in section 2.8, move the last sentence of section 5.1 to section, to the end of 5.2. In section 13.1, we changed the word shall to should. And then page 38, we had to delete a phrase, and then 13.4F and 13.5F, we were going to make the changes, so that it wasn't conditional time return for pregnancy leave or leave without absence of pay. So those are the changes that I recorded.
I think that was it.
Okay, so I have a motion by council member Campion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by council member Power. Call for vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, aye. Council member Hewer, aye. Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Power, aye. Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
On to communication. Do you have anything? Nope. See quick report.
I saw a few calendar dates. The beautification committee meeting is Thursday at 3:30 here at City Hall. On Monday, Memorial Day, May 25th, city offices are closed. And next Tuesday, May 26th, we have a special city council meeting, including a budget study session beginning at 3:30 right here at council chambers.
Very good. Comments by staff? We'll start over here with Tony. Mr. Stewart?
One second before you move on. How long do we anticipate that that special meeting is going to run?
It always depends on the amount of questions asked. Typically, they're within two hours.
Will we begin to pack it beforehand?
Yeah, it's actually in your boxes.
All right.
Just at probably 5 o'clock this afternoon.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, just a quick, easy one, please. We had an open house, with the non-participating property owners and registered voters in the area. We probably had about half the properties represented, had a good turnout, and for the most part, overwhelmingly, the folks that were in attendance were willing to come on board. In fact, we were planning on a subdivision and start building the next day, and we had some other very interested parties. So it looks like we'll probably be able to proceed with that, that, in a, in a, the EIR just got submitted to staff, hopefully to final review, your release for public review, anticipate within the next, well, probably by mid, so that will start that process, and most likely there will be combined joint review and, to also kind of update, update the entire process. So definitely moving forward, and, Paula, yeah.
Awesome. Mr. Winkler?
I'd like to wish you all a happy National Public Works Week, which started yesterday. And we have a series of activities, a key building, little things going on, starting yesterday, and each day through Friday, the management team helped to get us some donations, and had bagels yesterday morning, 6:30 as people came to work. Today, they had root beer float, sit there afternoon, break. Tomorrow is the big event, that we're having our annual, second, third annual pancake breakfast for our staff, and, and we'll be cooking. Council and department heads, if you've got, don't have a better offer, you're welcome on your way to work at the service between 6:30 and 8:00 AM. Staff are coming to work, they can grab a quick pancake breakfast, head on to their assigned duty. Friday, we're going to continue our, kind of our final lunch picnic with a chili cookoff and horseshoe. With that, I'd like to just give a shout out to our team. This year's theme for National Public Works Week is, community begins here, and it's basically trying to recognize the essential services that often go unnoticed or are taken for granted by the public. And we've got a good team out there working for public works, I'm proud to be your director of the public works department, and we have very reliable services. We work hard, we sometimes get criticized for various aspects of what we do, but we work hard to try to bring cost-effective, uh, providing services that are of benefit to the city of Galt, and achieve what our staff does.
That's very nice.
That's the good news.
Yeah.
As you have been made aware by the city manager, we did formally implement a stage three water warning effective yesterday, and the city of Galt, there were a number of restrictions coming into play, paralleling the state regulations, also took effect yesterday at 4:00. And primarily restricted our two days a week, and eliminating other types of outdoor uses that are deemed to be not a high priority use or an effective use of our state water, where we're struggling to meet successfully a 32% mandate reduction from our 2013 water usage levels. And I am cautiously optimistic that the community has risen to the occasion thus far, and we believe that the last three indications, this extra step in the summer will help us meet that goal.
Can you remember offhand what the days are, odd, even?
Yes, and I remember, if I remember.
I know, I know, Tuesday and, Tuesday and Saturday is, uh.
Even up against our Wednesdays and Sundays.
Wait a minute.
Even our Wednesdays and Sundays. Odd are Tuesdays and Saturdays, and no watering is permitted on outdoor landscapes on Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Now, within something we're just working through right now, within your ordinance is a waiver policy that allows people to apply for waivers for hardships, or, or undue repair costs that would be caused, or public specific situations that actually, categories of exemption that can be considered. And for instance, we are already watering our parks two days a week, but limited to a specific two days, both have water pressure implications for the city, and our restrictions. So we'll probably be issuing a waiver from a specific day a week, and just limited to two days per week per park, and then let our staff figure out what would work best for pressures and kinds of data water. Of course, it's the weekends, or type of tournaments, where they go one or two days. One day a week is not going to keep our sports facilities alive. So we're looking through what, some reasonable interpretation of our ordinance and some waivers, and we'll certainly probably be indicating for keeping some form of a ledger, what waivers that have been issued as of reporting. And we are open, school districts are concerned, they've got sports fields as well, two days a week in the heat of August, might mean they don't have a football field to play on in the fall when they come back, well, safety ramifications, or public benefits, so we're looking to be reasonable as we roll these apart, so.
What about the car washes? Do they recycle their water?
Yeah. My understanding is, there are either two or three car washes in town. I believe two of them have recycling capabilities, but nowhere in our ordinance do we require them to use them. So they were developed, we would, you know, suggested that be a design feature, but they can turn them off. And so if we move to stage four, we have the special restrictions, city manager as well, as deemed appropriate. So at this point, I don't think it's necessary. I have told them lately, we checked the, last year's, we're in, going into year three, and I believe they were both using their recycling, but they put them on mandates.
And you move forward with the disposition?
Uh, we have requested that they open, and the word this afternoon was, hopefully today or tomorrow morning, they'll get that open, and within two weeks, we'll be looking at those.
We are, we are going to move forward with them doing education, right?
Uh, we heard the council's direction, and yes, we're going to go forward with strong emphasis on education and outreach, and only where necessary, we heard to stick out and do the enforcement rules, but again, have a lot of, quite a lot of flagrant repeat violations that just are hurting the city's ability to meet 32% reduction.
Okay. Ms. Currie, nothing? No? No?
What he said.
Mr. Schleese? Steve Drummond?
So just, following up on the comment made, the budget and CIP items are in your box, and there are a couple other staff reports, the full package will be available on a normal day on Thursday, but we wanted to give you a full week's of look at. Again, this is a midterm budget, so this isn't a big budget, this is a revision of what we adopted last year, so typically, there's always, you know, quite a few revisions, but it's not the full complete CIP and budget, but typically, it'll be shorter, if you like, with the council to review. But they are, they will be reviewed. And I want to, I want to mention something I caught with Fisher Winkler, is that they've got their big horseshoe tournament coming up this Friday. You know why, last year, they invited, they had a big softball tournament, and they invited other city departments, put together a softball team to compete against public works, and we beat them so bad, and never got invited to that tournament. So now they're, they're doing horseshoe, you know. Of course, we did bring a few ringers from the recsy part.
No pun intended, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Rudolph? All right. Time to counsel. Mr. Campion?
Nothing.
Nope.
There you go. Knock over the water as we go. Vice Mayor?
Yes. We got six race beds in the community garden, and while we were doing that, a little couple came over from the apartment and asked if they could have a plot. And we gave them permission, and they came out with their shovels and immediately put in their garden, and it's looking really good. And then on Thursday, we have volunteers coming out to install the drip system. So I'm hoping it's going to qualify for the drought. It is vegetables, I thought I read something about, you know, if you're growing edible stuff, you can.
Is that one of your exemptions?
Yeah.
You might need to apply for a waiver if you're going to water more than two days a week on the assigned days. I'm not aware of an exemption for vegetable gardens, it's considered outdoor irrigation.
Okay.
Wow.
Pretty harsh.
I will, I will not want to get in trouble over watering again. I will be applying for guidance.
We'll probably start with education.
And the only other thing I wanted to say was, thank you to Galt High School, their art department, and their teacher Gina Holsted, they got, no, Holberg. They did the window murals on Fonds, and if you drive by there, you can't miss them, they're very bright. And just a word of explanation, they were studying something called German Impressionalism. So when you look at the purple cow, keep that in mind. Anyway, they did a great job, and they worked really hard. That's it.
Okay. I have nothing more with that. We'll be adjourned.